Madam Chairman, we're live.
Welcome to the afternoon session on January 13th. First up today is our treasurer is going to inform us on Idaho Power operating.
Yes.
Property judgment.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, all right, I'm gonna start off with a little bit of background for the sake of all of the commissioners, because I don't know if you are familiar with the recent judgment that Idaho Power was issued in regards to the assessed value of their operating property. So, operating property is valued at the state level, unlike real property or personal property, which is valued at the county level. Operating property is centrally assessed by the State of Idaho State Tax Commission, and operating property is anything in connection with public utilities, railroads, or private railroad car fleets located wholly or partially within the state of Idaho. So, when we are talking about operating property, we're talking mostly about power lines and other assets owned by Idaho Power in this instance. So, Idaho Power, just like any other property owner in the state of Idaho, has the opportunity to protest their valuation of their property. And in this instance, they were protesting the valuation method used to value their operating property in all of the state of Idaho. They went through the appeal process, and it went through the Board of Equalization at the State Tax Commission, and then on to the District Court. And the District Court of Idaho actually ruled in the tax commission's favor. And then Idaho Power took it a step further and went to the Idaho Supreme Court, and the Idaho Supreme Court reversed the District Court's decision and issued a judgment in favor of Idaho Power. And essentially, their operating property had been overvalued in the tax years 2020, 2021, and 2022, and therefore, they are due a refund based on the overtaxation because of the overvaluation of their operating property. So, the tax commission was kind enough to kind of summarize this in a two-page letter, and I sent it to all of your emails this morning. The tax commission was also generous enough to offer insight. If we had any additional questions that I can't answer for you today or that we come up with as a group today, they would be willing to have a meeting, a phone call, or a presentation by Tax Commissioner Paul Woods. So, just keep that in mind if there's things that come up that I'm not explaining well enough or that we collectively have additional questions about. So, this judgment requires that the Idaho Power is made whole again by receiving a refund back from the counties in which the operating property is located. This is the only current mechanism in Idaho code for refunding money in an instance like this. So, what they are asking is that the county either issue a credit on future tax bills to cover the amount of the money that was overpaid, or to write them a check. And by the end of today, I'm hoping that we can have a decision on which of these methods we are going to do, and I'll kind of explain the different options for each of those. But first, I'm gonna go through and talk about how the refund amount was calculated. So, because we're talking about three different tax years, we have to use levy rates from three different tax years. And operating property is located in all of the tax group authorities or tags in Valley County. And so, we took the reduction in value that was given to us by the tax commission based on the ruling by the Supreme Court and calculated a difference in value, and then we multiplied that difference in value by the levy rate, less the levy rate for any fire districts within that area, because fire districts do not pay operating property tax. So, we've come up with a calculation of the refund due by each taxing authority group in each tax year in question. And then, there is also judgment interest based on the amount that was due to Idaho Power for overpayment of taxes in the three years that they were valued incorrectly. So then, we also used a method that was recommended by the Idaho State Tax Commission and approved by Idaho Power. They both agree on this judgment interest calculation method to calculate the interest that is also due back to Idaho Power based on them being wronged by the overvaluation of property.
So, Joanna?
Yes.
You mentioned one piece I didn't quite pick up on. You said the operating value. Now, when I think of value, I think buildings. What's the operating value? Is it, is it talking about their building in Lake, or in Lake Fork? Or is it talking, what's it talking about?
That the building in Lake Fork is considered real property. We're specifically talking mostly about power lines.
Really?
Yes.
Oh.
So, I don't, Avista is the other company that was wrapped up in this judgment, and Avista is a power company that operates up north. So, both of those companies came and challenged the valuation method that the State Tax Commission was using to value operating property. And as you can imagine, operating property is very difficult to value, because it's not like it's bought and sold or constructed on a regular basis. Power lines are often installed and then left for years and years. So, how do you put a value on that to be able to tax it? And so, there was actually a U.S. Supreme Court ruling, uh, excuse me, it was an act passed by Congress in 1976 that changes the way that railroad systems are valued. And ever since 1976, railroads have like taken this other valuation method, and Idaho Power and Avista were challenging that they should be able to use that same valuation method in the valuation of their operating property, and they ended up winning the challenge. So, that's why, that's why we're here today talking about it. It's super complex.
Yeah, I wouldn't even know how to go there. But, you know, I get the part, you know, what you're looking at, and you're doing a credit with, my brain, simplest way to deal with this, but that's more your realm.
Yeah, so we have to make the decision of whether, as a county, we want to write Idaho Power a check. And if you looked at the spreadsheet that I sent, the total refund is going to be $107,689.26. Of that amount, $20,861.33 is interest, and the remaining, $86,827.93 is a refund of actual tax. And the decision we have to make today is, do we write them a $100,000 check and collect the other refund, claw it back from the taxing districts, either through asking them to write us a check or subtracting it from their future dispersments? Or do we issue a credit on their future tax bills? And we could go one of two ways here, not disperse expected revenue to the taxing districts or ask them to write us a check to cover that.
So, my question is this, I know that this is gonna be a conversation with the legislature this year. So, we write them a check, legislature decides they're gonna pay it. Are we gonna get refunded those funds?
That's, that's a good question. I do know that several counties have already written the check.
And therefore, why would the legislature take it out? You know, if we're already paying out funds, they're just gonna go, eh, well, not gonna even address this. And it's a state problem, that's so frustrating to me. And the fact that our taxpayers are gonna pay this back, plus interest, on a state issue.
Correct, I, I very much agree with your sentiment there. And I think that you're refunding tax dollars that were paid in error is one issue, but then paying the interest on the judgment is, is a completely separate issue, and I think that they should be considered separately. Because currently, we don't have a mechanism for issuing a credit for interest on a judgment. So, I can issue a credit for taxes that were paid, and the courts say that they were paid in error, so I can refund that money. But now, I also have to come up with a way to issue an interest payment for taxes that were never there, or interest that was never there. So, the whole, the method of dealing with this in our current property tax accounting software is going to be very complicated. And these letters and this judgment was handed down right at the beginning of December, which was at the beginning of Tax Drive, when every treasurer in all of the state of Idaho was very, very busy. And some treasurers chose to sit down and get this figured out right away. I reached out to the tax commission immediately, and I said, does this need to be dealt with today? Or can I wait until January? And they said, please take your time and make sure that you've researched this and approached it correctly with your commissioners. And the other concern was, is that the interest would continue to accrue the longer we waited to make a decision on this. Well, Idaho Power was generous enough to say that they'll stop judgment interest as of December 31st, as long as we have a decision for them on getting them made whole by the end of 2025. So, that's either writing them a check or issuing them credits on their future tax bills.
Yeah, the whole year here.
Yeah, we probably need to make a decision prior to that, but we need to have a solution to make them whole by the end of this year. And luckily, Idaho Power's tax bills during the year are just slightly more than $100,000, so we should be able to take care of this entire thing in one tax year without having to do a combined method of issuing a credit and making a payment.
My concern is clawing it back from these little tiny taxing districts. You know, they've already done their budgets, they already are spending the funds as we speak, and I, I have concerns with having to claw it back from them. So, as long as the interest is not still accumulating, I would be in favor of doing the tax credit and not having to take it back, and it's gonna hurt, hurt their budgets next year, because we're gonna have to get it back from them, but at least they don't, they haven't budgeted on that. And maybe by then, the state will recognize their error and rebate some interest.
So, your thing about first October, it'll kind of wash both ways if we did the credit.
So, it, it won't wash, but what that allows for is, it allows any taxing district who feels that they're materially harmed by this, they can issue a judgment levy next year, which would allow them to levy for the amount of, of, up to the judgment amount so that they could be made whole. Because if you're, if, if we issue a credit on the 2025 tax bills when they go out in November, essentially, what will happen is, you know, I'll just pick one of these, the Cascade Medical Center taxing district is going to owe $10,000. So, either they receive less, $10,000 less than what they requested in this year's budget, or they plan their budget next year to receive $10,000 less, or they issue a judgment levy and they collect what they expect to collect in property taxes, plus there's another levy on the tax bill where they're able to collect the $10,000. And part, another thing that makes this a little complicated is, I don't know that any of these taxing districts are aware of what's happening, and it unfortunately is my job to reach out to them and explain to each one of them. So, another part of the reason why I'm going into such great detail in this hearing is that I'm hoping I can just send them a YouTube link and say, hey, watch this, and then give me a call. So.
Hold my beer and watch this.
Yeah, I'm not sure, you know, we, I'm not gonna say we're lucky, because the situation is not great, but Washington County, to the west of us here, they owe over a million dollars. And that is crippling for their taxing districts. So, we, you know, I'm looking at some of these numbers, and some of them are gonna be very much impacted, but some of them only owe $500 or $200, and it should be something that, that they can manage. I'm definitely willing to work with them on whatever solutions they need to, to be able to operate this year and plan for it next year.
So, if we, your recommendation would be what, from your office?
My recommendation is that we issue credits on the 2025 tax bills.
Now, you said it would be difficult to do the interest. Would you prefer to pay that separate and then credit them the amount of the taxes and then pay them the interest? Would that simplify?
That's a great question. I, I do not know how we're gonna handle the interest. I'm hoping that if I work with the tax commission and work with the other counties who are using the same software that I am, that we'll be able to come up with a solution. I don't, one of our counties, our neighboring counties, who uses the same software, already issued checks. And I don't know how they're able to record that in their tax software. So, I plan on working with them to get that question answered, but that's, that would be a good option to leave open.
So, if we just pay the interest right now, look at about $12,000?
The interest alone is $20,000, $20,861.33.
If we do that, where does that come from? Just our general reserve?
It would have to come from general, I believe that one of the counties paid it out pilt. The interest is not still accruing, so paying the interest now won't change the amount that's due whenever we decide to make Idaho Power whole again. So, the amount presented to you today, as long as we make a decision soon, and in that decision, our solution is to make Idaho Power whole before the end of next, or of this year, then this is the amount that's due, and it won't change.
This interest is just what's secured up to December 31st?
Correct.
So, by the end of this year, fiscally, or our?
Calendar year.
Calendar year.
December 31st, 2025.
If we wait then and we budget for the interest, and somebody's lying on them, and.
We do have the interest now, though.
I don't, you know, I don't think so, not if they're, if they're not continuing it, yeah. That way, we can actually budget it for next year, and then send a check next year, maybe separately.
Yeah, and like Commissioner Caldwell had mentioned, I, I, it would be nice to have the flexibility to cut a check for the interest if that deems to be the easiest way to deal with it in our software system, but we won't know that until we get a little further into researching how we're gonna solve this.
And if we go ahead and give them a credit and wait on the payments, if the legislature takes this up and passes something at the state, or not in front of them.
Correct.
So, I think that's probably a good call. This is an action item, or just, yeah, it is an action item, so you need a decision on that.
Yeah, and I guess what I'm looking for specifically is, I'm looking for approval to issue Idaho Power a credit on their 2025 tax bill for the judgment.
I would entertain a motion.
Does, does our motion need to address the interest separately?
I don't think so, I think that I probably have the ability to, well, I don't know. What do you think, Clerk Miller? He thinks so.
We're gonna have to determine the interest. Today, I think if the commissioners are inclined to make a motion just regarding the tax credit of the property, the operating property judgment, I think that will be enough. And then, if you wanna come back regarding the interest, that would make sense to, to me.
Can we do that during the budget process?
That's an option. What?
Yeah, I think that's a great option. I'm just looking through my notes to make sure I didn't miss anything. I do think that it is wise to wait and see what the legislature comes up with, because if they appropriate dollars to pay the interest in this judgment, that would alleviate some of this financial burden to our county and to the taxing districts.
Madam Chairman, so I, I think I'm, just so I'm correct, the interest calculation is about $19,000, is that right?
It should be $20,000, $20,861.33.
Add a motion?
I move to approve the Idaho, to credit Idaho Power operating property judgment in the amount listed, said by Treasurer Roberts.
That's all right, I almost called you Davis earlier. We'll work on that, deport.
Deport, that's correct. And hold on the interest discussion until budget time. A second?
A second.
It's been moved in second, I'll on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Right. And I will just make one more comment. I think that as I start to contact the taxing districts and discuss with them their options, that will be helpful in, in us understanding whether or not paying the interest or issuing a credit for that interest is gonna be the best path forward. So, I think that's a good idea.
So, Joanna, I think, um, if we issue a credit, and next year their valuation, you saying is somewhere around $100,000 anyhow? So, that would, that could almost wash in a way.
Um, it, it could, it's, it's enough over $100,000 that I, I would think that this would be enough to cover it. I don't know that for certain, though, because we don't know what levy rates are gonna do next year. The, I will say that the correction to the valuation method happened in 2023. So, since 2023, Idaho Power's operating property has been valued correctly. So, we're not gonna see a large adjustment in their tax being paid over last year.
That was my next question, what do we plan for the future, so that's good news.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Is this only in the Idaho Power's operating property, or are there other utilities that?
Avista was also a part of the lawsuit, which is a power company up north. So, so far.
Property here?
Not in Valley County.
What about other utilities?
I've not heard of any other utilities joining this. And we hope that they're not listening.
So, no one, easily. Thank you very much for the information.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good afternoon.
You too. All right, our next item up is, we have a discussion or decision on public work services at Cascade, so, come on up, Scott. I'm assuming that this, this discussion, first of all, who's gonna turn on all of the sewer water, you know, all of that kind of stuff, making that transition? And I think that this was also probably along how to fix that water leak. We kind of just made reference this morning to go ahead and move forward to, so that we don't further destroy that building.
Yeah, but I mean, I think it's the other utilities, you know, kind of like our, our elevator maintenance and stuff.
Yes.
And just probably continue with the one we're using here, and just continue our, anything with Schindler.
Is the water leak under Merititle's, those owners to take care of?
What's that?
Water leak that's down there, is that, is that up to the Merititle people that own the building? Or who owns it?
Brian just sent me the contract, and there's, it, it kind of, it covers all structures, but kind of like foundation, so, um, but if we take it over, we have to give them a 30-day written notice that we're gonna take care of, is what I understand from the contract, so. I think I'll send an email to Matthew as, I think we can email out that we're gonna take it over, because we wanna get something done with it and stuff. And then, we can possibly go back and then have them, you know, put in the claim to their insurance or something to reimburse us for it and stuff.
So, it'll be on their dime, not us?
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be claim on their insurance and not on iKrimp for us and stuff.
Right.
Is what it would be, so, that's it, you know, looking at with that down there.
That's a good question, but who, who, who is Matthew?
Is with the Merititle?
Matthew Paulson.
They are still, their lease expires the end of February. At moment in time, we take the whole thing over.
So, if we get the notification in this week, we're with, still have 30 days before their contract, so it could, you know, possibly carry on past their, their liability could carry on past, you know, expiration, I believe, of their contract right now, so.
So, they're gonna be able to move in in time to the little building next to Stinker Station?
I don't know.
I'm talking the last 30 days, but before that, they were certain they were.
Busy upstairs, so.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, what is on the projector is all of the services that Merititle currently pays for. Reason I'm bringing it up for Commissioners to consider is, which, are the Commissioners inclined to continue services with all of these entities? I mean, I know that we have plowing, and we have cleaning, so I don't know. Scott, if you can provide us with an overall explanation of these services that are currently being provided? I mean, we, we all understand that, that we're gonna be required to have the City of Cascade for sewer and water, Idaho Power for power, Lake Shore Disposal, but are the Commissioners inclined to continue services or have a pair of service agreement with Accor Tree, Alpha Landscaping, Atnip Excavation? So, this was provided to us by Paul Fritz with the title, Future Title Company. Provided to Ms. Rokey, and then Ms. Rokey provided them to us. So, these are existing services that Merititle, I believe, currently pays for.
Do they have these people under contract? Kind of hard, if they have a tree service on contract, I mean, maybe a vendor they use in the event of needing one.
That's what I'm thinking, too. Some of these are just, you know.
Yeah, they're just, a, a vendor list is what they are. They're actually under contract with them or not?
I don't know what Protex is. Gold Corn Properties Services.
Hello, as we end the lease at the end of February, we will be canceling utilities and services that are currently in our name to avoid having services disrupted or disconnected. You can have them put on your name prior to the end of month below or what we have paid in the past year. So, just thought the Commissioners might wanna see.
Yeah, 'cause they had a tree service come in and take the one tree out on the east side of the building, it was dead.
Gold Corn is a, they normally do cleaning.
Yeah.
So, the only one that I would question, Scott, is the Alpha Landscape. You've already got somebody else that you use.
Well, we have Nuclear Nelson do it, you know, taking care of what's, kind of our responsibility down there. I'd have to see if they're interested in, in taking over the upper portion. Because I get, I see the grass did come back from being sprayed, so it survived, it looks like, and stuff.
I think we've gotta transfer City of Cascade, Idaho Power, Lake Shore Disposal. You've already got elevators, so.
Yeah, we'll have Premier Elevator take over, because they, um, I'm not sure they actually really fixed the issue. They just said to make sure not to leave it in the up, upper floor. So, I don't know if the leak was actually fixed, they just, I think, vacuumed out the oil that was down there and, and said, don't leave it up there so it's got pressure on it, and throw in the pit for oil, so. We'll have to have Premier look at it. We have to get some of the entry keys for it, because there's a key that goes in the door. When it's stuck, you can actually manually open the door to get people out. It's a sectional key, it's different than the key, it's a different brand elevator than we use here. We have a long key, it's kind of horseshoe-shaped, slides in, we can open the doors with. That one has, well, it's in segments, it drops down. I wasn't able to find any down there. Dean said he could get them for us, though.
But we probably need to have all the doors rekeyed that last day in February.
Okay.
And leave, I mean, before.
Okay, and also, like, once we get some of the keys to elevators, probably have some of the people that are just down there to go through the operation or getting people out, too.
Please make some, sure somebody's trained, okay, so I'm down there.
Like I say, I, I'm not sure I can say with the other, um, well, if it's, they're just like our vendors, the people we use as required, don't actually have an agreement with them. We need to talk with Dean when we did the elevator contract this year of, you know, adding it on to at the end of February, you know, routine inspection and maintenance of that one. And I think it's gonna have to have a five-year, I was down there looking in the elevator room at their certificates on the wall, and I don't, I don't think it's been done for quite a while, and it's a state requirement, so.
And that would be the recommendations? So, are you gonna go ahead and do that in your division?
Madam Chairman, yeah, we can make contact with Idaho Power, City of Cascade, and Lake Shore Disposal. Then I would just respectfully request that, Scott, if you could communicate with Schindler Elevator, that you're not under contract with them for that building, is that correct?
Yeah, but I don't know if they even have an actual contract with them there. They may have one, but they, they may have the same things like they used to have here, where it just automatically rolls over, you know.
Since, didn't we just get a contract with another company to take care of all our elevators here?
What's that?
And we get a contract with another company?
Yeah, we do, we have a, a contract with Premier Elevator.
So, they could, they could start taking over?
They're already aware of it, and we've already discussed it with Dean. Actually, Dean came and looked at it and gave us, gave a bid. Actually, Dean came and looked at it and gave us, gave a bid to repair it. They went, at the time, the owners went with Schindler to have them come up and address the situation with it.
Do you have a breakdown of all of our vendors like this?
Yeah, it's about two pages.
Because I'm just thinking...
What, what, my, my vendor list has is their name and their vendor number. I do have, the ones I use all the time, you know, I have their contact information. But I want to...
Might as you start, start thinking about transitioning out, keep something documented where we have their names and addresses and...
Yeah, the actions, what I'm trying to work on is actually a manual for facilities or actually that will have, you know, inspection times, things, or the vendor list, contact information. We've got together a list of all our filters and belts and stuff for our heat pumps, you know, things like boiler inspections, fire inspections, backflow preventers that have to be done yearly, lubrication schedules and stuff for equipment I'm trying to work on.
And that'll be easy to use as we've discussed, doing a pre-approval each year for all the vendors that you use regularly. So if you have a vendor list, then we can pre-approve those vendors, so.
Yeah.
Sure they have everything that we need, but...
Yeah, I mean, I said, the page is almost, it's actually two columns long, but they're kind of like these, they're, when the occasion requires them, it may not happen in a year, but they're, it's a contact that if something does happen, that they're, you know, we have someone to con, reach out and contact and may have to have them sign the service agreement or, you know.
Scott, do they have a, Lake Shore, do they have a commercial garbage there right now?
Yeah, they have, it's, it's out right at the top where you go around the hill. They got that kind of enclosure. There's a, kind of like one of these dumpsters there.
Gotcha. That's all we need.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. My computer is dead. Bet it is. I asked, but they gave you that.
Yeah, sure, we could take, we could take this splitter.
Oh, and actually put it right back.
I'll get it in there.
Put it in the middle.
That way you guys would have access to it.
Our next agenda item is not until 2:00. So Clerk, if you want to put us on hold.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, do you want to go take the, want to wait to see if anyone from the public presents? Or do you want to go into the executive session?
We need the sheriff here in HR. Oh, I saw him walk over here. Let's see if he's available.
We can just go off the record and come back at 2:00.